Please rise to pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. You seated? I have the acceptance of the minutes, September 3rd, 19th, 21st, October 3rd, 17th, November 21st, and December, uh...
So moved.
Hold the favor. Okay, before we do anything else, we'll get a little, give out some... On our area here. All right, let's see. What we have is, we have four, um, plaques which will be going to the councils that will no longer be here next, next week, or the week after, whatever. Okay, and what it says is, City of Lewiston, presented to Tim LaJoy, Ward Two Councillor, in appreciation of his dedicated service to the City of Lewiston, Maine, January 16th to January 18th. Isabel, you're next.
Okay.
Okay. Presented to Isabel Golden, Ward Three, City Council, in appreciation of her dedicated service to the City of Lewiston, Maine, January 16th to January 18th. Next up is Ward Four, Shane Bouchard, soon to be the, sitting in this seat. We're just gonna swap it a little bit, all right? Okay. Presented to Shane Bouchard, Ward Four, City Council, in appreciation of his dedicated service to the City of Lewiston, Maine, November 14, 2014 to January 2018. And last but by no means least, Michael, why don't you come up here?
Michael.
Because I'm not gonna walk all the way over there. Presented to Michael Ahl, The Chance, Ward Seven, City Council, in appreciation of his dedicated service to the City of Lewiston, Maine, January 2014 to January 2018.
And as council president, I'd like to take a moment to thank you, Mayor McDonald, for your service to Lewiston from January of 2012 through January of 2018. As we all know, Mayor McDonald loves this community, and he's served it well and with his heart, not only as the mayor, but also through his service, his previous service with the Lewiston Police Department and the Lewiston School Department. As mayor, Bob's unwavering commitment to residents of all ages has been evident through the amount of time he's spent talking with residents, listening to them, and Bob has also been known to show appreciation to those around him, whether it's the hard-working public works crews, to veterans, and to volunteers. So, on behalf of the council, I'd like to thank you, Mayor McDonald, for your commitment and service to the City of Lewiston, its residents, and to its future.
I didn't do that much. Public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. Max, does anybody wish to speak? And so does he, the next.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Rick Kaye, Lewiston Firefighters Association President. I come here tonight to basically say to thank you to those councils that'll be leaving us tonight, to Mayor McDonald. A lot of people may not know that Mayor McDonald attended every one of our annual Christmas giving programs. Anytime we called him to show up at the fire station, he did. Tomorrow will be his last, last time that he comes as we donate gifts to Hope Haven and Salvation Army. Always enjoyed seeing Mayor McDonald around the firehouse. I remember his last day as a police officer down at Lincoln Street, he stopped in to see us when I was on duty. So we're gonna miss you, we wish you the best, thank you for your service. To all the councils that are leaving, and the councils that will be staying, I know we've had some difficult past few years. It all came together, and it's because of your efforts that we moved this forward. I'd like to thank Ed, Heather, and Dennis, and basically to extend our warm wishes and thank you for all that you've done. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
So my name is Jay Allen. I own Six Sigma Properties. I've been buying and renovating buildings in Lewiston for over three years now. At last count, I've got about 10,000 hours of work with my dirty hands. So, I came tonight just to say one thing real briefly, not really complaining, but since I've been up here for three years, I've been robbed six times. It's reached the point that I feel like I'm literally under attack in my current project, rehabbing 16 units on Blake Street. It's reached the point that I've actually had to build a safe room inside my building with no windows and all steel doors. So, what I would ask, and I'm sure this isn't the right place, actually, because I'm sure it's a state law, but I'd like to just point out that the problem really isn't just with the drug addicts and the thieves here, right? It's the pawn shops as well. When a straggly-looking wigged-up dude walks in that is so weak that he can't even carry the tools that he stole from me, right? And the last one, they got $6,000 worth of my tools, and the pawn shops buy it, no questions asked. That just bothers me, and you guys probably can't do anything about it, because I believe it's a state law, but just be aware that what's going on in this last case where I really, I mean, windows broken in, doors broken in, I had the opportunity to buy back some of my tools from the pawn shop. Now, I've been in contact with the DA's office, and they've been helpful, right? I'll be at the trial for this wingnut, I'll follow him till the end of time. I don't care about the money, it's just the idea, all right? It just, and again, really has nothing to do with you guys, okay? But it just, it's reached the point that I've gone, then got my concealed carry permit. Now, I don't know that I'm actually gonna buy a gun, I've got kids, I'm not against guns, it just scares the hell out of me to own one, you know, with kids, I don't know what to do. But what I would ask the council to do is, in your spare time, of which I know you don't have any, if you would, you consider speaking with the DA about making sure these pukes just don't get thrown back out on the street. I mean, the guy that hit me, he hit me twice, actually, within a very short period of time. And it was just through pure luck that I was able to identify him. I had a game camera, well, I actually had multiple game cameras around the property. He stole all the other ones, except the one he didn't see, you know? So, again, don't want to take up a whole bunch of time here, but it's sort of a sad place to be when you literally feel like you are under attack, to where I'm gonna have to start sleeping, you know, in these buildings. And I really don't want to do that. I rarely see my wife and kids as it is, and if I start sleeping in freaking Lewiston every night, well, that's not gonna go well for me. So anyway, thank you for your time, and good luck with the Nixon never-bomb. I appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close it. Roll call.
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the councillor of Ward Two, and we'll also note, Mr. Mayor, for the record, that the councillor from Ward Six has an excused absence this evening.
Consent agenda.
There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds. Item number two, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds. And item number three, order authorizing execution of a municipal quitclaim deed for real estate located at 120 No Name Pond Road.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by councillor Bouchard, seconded by councillor Leisen. Call the roll.
Councillor from Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, agenda item number four.
Item number four. Public hearing pursuant to seventeen MRSA Section 2856, securing hazardous structure 795 and 805 Lisbon Street. There are two items for requested action. The first item, to conduct a hearing to determine if the erosion issue at 795 and 805 Lisbon Street poses a serious threat to the public health and safety and requirement, requires that the structure be secured as provided by Title Seventeen, Section 2856 of the main revised statutes, and the rest, Chapter Ninety-One, subsection four of Title Seventeen.
So moved.
Hearing to secure the structure at 795 Lisbon Street and 805 Lisbon Street pursuant to seventeen main revised statutes, section 2856. We are meeting this evening to conduct a hearing to determine whether the paved area at the rear of 795 Lisbon Street and 805 Lisbon Street, herein referred to as the structure, poses a serious threat to public health and safety within the meaning of seventeen main revised statute, section 2856. If the council determines that the structure poses a serious threat to the public health and safety, it will be then determined what action the property owner must take. Under seventeen main revised statute, 2856, the municipality shall have the right to secure structures which pose a serious threat to the public health and safety. This is a standard the council will use to determine whether the structure, determine whether to secure the structure. Before we start, I have a question for all City Council members. 795 Lisbon Street is owned by Franklin Property Trust, LLC. 805 Lisbon Street is owned by Storage Realty Corporation, and is leased by Sullivan Tire Company, Inc., or one of its affiliates. The City of Lewiston holds an easement across 795 Lincoln Street. Does any City Council member know either or both of the property owners, tenants, or have any knowledge about this matter that means you could not fairly and impartially hear the facts and decide the matter based on the evidence presented at this hearing? All set? Okay. Next, I ask that any representative or representatives for 795 Lisbon Street and 108 Lisbon, uh, extract that, 805 Lisbon Street, or a party in interest who is present tonight to introduce yourself, including identifying your name, address, and position.
Good evening. Roy Donlin, I'm the Director of Real Estate and the Associate General Counsel for Sullivan Tire Company. Our address is forty-one Accord Park Drive in Norwell, Massachusetts.
Good evening. My name is Robert Danielson. I'm an attorney in Portland, Maine, and I represent Storage Realty Corp. My address is sixty-five West Commercial Street, Portland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack O'Leary. I'm with SciTech Environmental of Marshfield, Massachusetts, and I'm, we represent Sullivan Tire on engineering matters.
Anyone else? Anyone here from Franklin Properties? Now, the procedure that, now, the procedure that the City Council will follow when conducting this hearing are as follows. One, any documents to be used in this proceeding will be marked as exhibit. I accept into evidence the planning department's previous provided exhibits, ASOL for seventy-nine Lisbon Street and eight oh five Lisbon Street. The presentation, the presentation of evidence regarding the structure will proceed as follows. A city public works depart, the city public works department will present an opening statement and relevant evidence regarding why it believes the structure at issue poses a serious threat to the public health and safety, and what remedies the City Council shall order. B, following the completion of the public works department presentation, any opposing party shall have an opportunity to present an opening statement and any relative, relevant evidence that it wants the City Council to consider with regards to whether the structure at issue poses a serious threat to the public health and safety. If so, what remedy the council shall order. C, the public works department can then ask questions of any opposing party and any witnesses it presents. D, any opposing party can ask questions of the public works department and, and any witness it presents. E, the public works department can then make additional comments regarding any opposing party's presentation. F, any opposing party can make additional comments regarding the presentation of the public works department. G, the City Council members can then ask questions of the, of the public works department and opposing parties or witnesses. Each side can then make closing, closing remarks of not more than two minutes each. Only parties to these hearings will be allowed to participate. Comments from the public will not be taken at this hearing. Three, after all information has been presented, the record will be closed and the City Council will deliberate and take a vote on whether the structure in question poses a serious threat to the public's health and safety. If the council determines that the structure poses a serious threat to the public health and safety, it shall deliberate and take a vote on it, on the appropriate order to be made to remedy the situation. Four, this is an administrative hearing and not a court proceeding or trial, therefore the formal rules of evidence will not apply. Five, as mayor, I will determine the appropriate and the admissibility of evidence on the advice of attorney Clifford. I now ask public works department to present the City Council with information relevant to this matter before us.
Mr. Mayor? Members of the council, my name is Michael Carey. Tonight, I'm representing city staff in this matter. Sullivan Tire parking lot is perched on a steep bank. That bank is washing away, and the public continues to use the lot. The hearing tonight is to determine what should be done about that matter. The bank on which the parking lot is perched is unstable, it is in danger of collapse, and it cannot be relied upon to support the lot. The hearing tonight is governed by the Main's Dangerous Building Act. The act covers both a building and a structure. In addition to ordering demolition as a remedy under the act, the act allows a main municipality to order that a building or structure be secured. Tonight, city staff is seeking that the structure at 795, 805 Lisbon Street be secured. There are two and only two questions before the council tonight, and they come directly from the statute. Does the parking lot pose a serious threat to public health and safety? And if so, what actions must the property owners take? This hearing is not about why the bank eroded. The council is not asked to determine whose fault it was that the bank eroded and is Furthermore, the section 2856 of the act does not require a municipality to hold a hearing. This is different than the dangerous buildings actions that this council has considered in the past. In almost every instance there, the council must hold a public hearing. So why are we here? The city chose to hold a hearing tonight to give the owners and the parties and the party in interest an opportunity to present evidence as to the two questions before us. Why the structure does not pose a serious threat to public health and safety, and if it does, to possibly oppose a corrective action that the council may order. So first tonight, Deputy Director of Planning and Code Enforcement, Dave Hediger, will present information about who owns the two lots at question, and, and that notice, that they received notice of tonight's hearing. Then we're gonna move on to the first question before the council tonight. Does it, does the parking lot pose a serious threat to public health and safety? The parking lot is a structure under the statute that may be, that a municipality may be ordered secure. So I'm gonna read tonight a portion of the definition from the Dangerous Buildings Act of what is a building. Quote, "A building means a building or structure, or any portion of a building or structure, or any wharf, pier, or piling," and it proceeds to talk about wharf, pier, or piling. The term "structure" is not defined by the act. There have been no court cases interpreting the act that define structure. So in this case, when, when a, a term is not defined by statute or by court cases interpreting that statute, we look to both the context of the statute and to the normal meaning of what, of how that word is used in, in the law and in English. So first, a building means a building or structure, or any portion thereof. Force, structure must mean something different than building, or the word is irrelevant. Moving on to the definitions. Black's Logic Dictionary defines structure as, "Any construction, production, or piece of work artificially built up or composed of parts purposefully put, purposely joined The Webster's Dictionary has, has a number of definitions, the two that could apply here. Something such as a building that is constructed, and the second is an arrangement of particles or parts in a substance or body. Public Works Director Jones will show evidence showing a number of things. First, the bank provides the support for the parking lot. The surface of the bank currently has no man-made or natural support for the soil. The bank is eroding significantly, such that the bottom face of the bank is vertical. The, that is the effect of the last four years, erosion, leading up of the last four years, twenty to twenty-five feet from, of the bank have eroded away. The top of the bank is twenty to twenty-five feet closer to Sullivan Tire and closer to the parking lot at issue than it was just four years ago. The park, the, this slope of the bank and the parking lot is at risk for failure, and the health, safety of pedestrians, Sullivan Tire employees, vendors, and the occupants of any automobile on that lot is threatened. Those facts meet the first question before the council tonight. They pose a serious threat to public health and safety. The second question, what actions should the property owners take? After presenting the evidence about the threat to public health and safety of the bank and, and the structure, the public works director will detail how city staff proposes that the bank be addressed. So I'm gonna start now and ask Deputy Director Hediger to, to walk you through the, the evidence you have in the binder today. Thank you.
Good evening, council, I'm David Hediger. As indicated, I'm Deputy Director of City Planner for the City of Lewiston, Certified Code Officer, and I have a certification from DEP in erosion control practices as well. Before you folks here, you have a number of exhibits, and just go through them. Exhibit A in your packets is the trustees' deeds to Franklin Property Trust, LLC, dated January 16th, 2008. That included 795 Lisbon Street. Exhibit B shows the deeds dated December 5th, 1973, and August 11th, 1976, dating 805 Lisbon Street to Storage Realty Corporation, that's the property that Sullivan Tire is on. Exhibit C shows the tax maps that identify 795 Lisbon Street as parcel ID RE-00013452 and 805 Lisbon Street parcel ID RE-00009840. Exhibit D shows a recorded memorandum of lease for the building and property at 805 Lisbon Street to Sullivan Tire. That company or affiliate continues to occupy the property at 805 Lisbon Street today. Exhibit E shows a city easement across 795 Lisbon Street. That's the easement for the stormwater drain. Exhibit F shows a copy of notice of this hearing, which on December 8th, 2017, was recorded in the Andes Goguen County Registry of Deeds in Book 9745, page 258. Exhibit G shows a return of service on Franklin Property, which is dated December 7th, 2017. Exhibit H shows a return of service on Storage Realty, which is dated December 12th, 2017. Finally, Exhibit I shows the return of service on Sullivan Tire, which is dated December 7th, 2017.
Thank you. Deputy Director, if you could state your name and summarize your credentials, please.
My name's Dave Jones. I'm Director of Public Works. I've been with the city since 1999, and for that, maybe for 23 years. I have a licensed professional engineer, and have been since 1982. In Exhibit J, you'll see my professional engineer's license as evidence.
If you could proceed to describe the condition of the parking lot at Sullivan Tire and the bank, please.
David Gudis, can you bring up the slideshow now? So, this slideshow is also included in your packet as Exhibit K. Figure one for the slideshow basically shows the structure or the back parking lot area of 795 and 805 Lisbon Street. That is the structure that we're talking about. It covers both the rear of both 795 and 805 Lisbon Street, and the edge of the structure is now very close to the top of the bank. When we first were notified of the erosion, we went out and took a look at some of the areas and stuff, and quite frankly, we were worried at how close the top of the bank actually was to the edge of the parking lot. So the city installed some protective fencing to protect the public from approaching the top of the bank. If you go beyond that fence line there, just four, five feet, it actually drops right off, and you'll see another photo here in a few minutes that gives you an idea on the steepness of that bank. We also placed a curb and repaired a couple of areas of the parking lot, such that the curb had some base to actually support it. That curb is there to try and redirect some of the surface drainage away from that bank so that we could limit the amount of water going over the bank and then following down and eroding some of the bank away even more. We did place some backfill behind the curb just to support it so that during the winter time, plows are plowing that back parking lot there and stuff, and it gave some support to actually keep that curb in place. This is a slide that kind of shows you an overview, and what I'd like to try and do is give you an idea about what's actually there and where we're looking at. So I'm going to use the mouse here a little bit to help us out. So this is the building where Sullivan Tire is actually working out of. The structure that we're talking about is this parking lot that's in the back area here, and covers this whole back area. The blue area that's outlined is where the easement is, that the city actually has an easement across Franklin Property. The property line between the two properties runs roughly right down this edge of that easement, such that the easement itself is all on Franklin Property. Let's see. There are two stormwater pipes that's owned by the city that goes through the area. One is this 18-inch pipe that comes down along this area and actually goes down to the bottom of the bank, out beyond where the erosion is. And another one is this green line here that goes through, and this is a 30-inch pipe that comes down and actually ends right in this area that's on the bank. You'll see that a little bit more clearly here in a few minutes. There is a private catch basin in the back of the parking area, right here in back of the Sullivan Tire area. That catch basin is where most of the drainage for this back structure actually goes to. There's a six-inch PVC line that comes out of that and goes into, excuse me, where the erosion has occurred. It has been undermined and part of it has actually failed when you get back into the erosion area. The yellow line here roughly shows where the aerial photograph from 2013 showed that the top of the bank was back in April of 2013. That's when this aerial photograph was actually taken. This comes from our city GIS system. In November, when we were out there researching what was going on, we took some points, and the red line with the black dots here shows where the current top of the bank is. So you can see there's about a 20 to 25-foot area that has been eroded since 2013. The top of this bank right now is about 55 to 65 feet from the edge of that building, but it's right up next to where that parking area is, where vehicles come in to get into the garage.
Mr. Mayor, you showed us the fence that was installed. Could you show me your mouse go across where that straight line is on that?
That's roughly, starting over in this area, and it comes right straight across this way, and we actually have bent it back a little bit, back into this area here, so it's curved as it's going back in through. Let's see. Let me, I'm going to apologize for the council because I want to, there's a lot of information that we want to share with you and make sure that we have it in the record. I'm going to refer to my notes quite a bit here tonight, and I want to make sure that I cover all of the information that we have for you. When the city installed that 30-inch drain pipe, that's this one that I showed you earlier that comes down and stops roughly right in this area, that was installed in the early 1970s. The public works construction plans show that the bank was armored with riprap at that time, and that riprap would armor and stabilize the bank and prevent or significantly slow the erosion. I've already talked about the 18-inch storm drain pipes that empties down beyond the bank. The owner of the 805 Lisbon Street owns that catch basin that I talked about there earlier. And we talked about the change from 2013 to the present day as far as how much this top of the bank has actually moved back into this way. So let me move on to the next slide. This is a slide, it's taken as a Google Earth photo back in December 2003. This is of the same area. You can see back in this area here, there appears to be a significant amount of fill that had been added to that bank in behind 795 Lisbon Street. Move on here. This is one of the slides that I was mentioning earlier, that you're going to get an idea on what the actual conditions are. The bank currently has no riprap, which would armor, stabilize the bank, and prevent significance or significantly slow the erosion. There is little or no vegetation growing that would support the soil material and prevent the erosion. Without any man-made or natural support for the soil material on the bank, stormwater flow through that 30-inch diameter drain pipe, which you can see right here. That's a 30-inch drain pipe. And the six-inch drain pipe that comes from that catch basin up in the top that's actually off to the right-hand side here, you can't see it. That drainage would end up eroding the bank even further. The slope of the bank above the pipe is very steep. The elevation change from the top of this pipe to up above, that's John Eli, our Highway Operations Manager, standing up on top there. He's just probably this side of where that fence would be that we saw earlier on. There's probably about a 20 to 25-foot elevation change between where he's standing and the top of that pipe. That's not a vertical slope, but it's a very steep slope, and you can see where there's rivulets and been some erosion coming down through there, and it continues to erode. From this pipe down to this little pool that's down below here, this is a vertical drop right underneath that pipe. That is continuing to erode. It's about a 15-foot vertical drop down to where that pool is. One thing you can also see that there's some corroded corrugated metal pipe that is down in the bottom of the area that's been eroded out. There's at least six sections of the pipe that measure roughly about 120 linear feet, and that lies along the stream bed down below where the concrete pipe comes out of the bank. Someone appears to have used the metal corrugated pipe to extend the 30-inch drain pipe. The city has no records that it extended the 30-inch drain pipe or approved its extension. There's no evidence that the riprap installed in the early 1970 remains on site. It was either removed or it's been washed away through the erosion. The conclusions that I've drawn from reviewing this is that the erosion has compromised the integrity of the bank and its ability to support the structure, the parking lot up above. The bank, the top of the bank, and the edge of the structure are unstable. Erosion has undermined the 30-inch drain pipe. Additional stormwater flow that flows through the 30-inch drain pipe, the six-inch drain pipe from the catch basin on the parking lot, and the surface runoff will continue to erode the bank and undermine the 30-inch drain pipe. Erosion of the bank has compromised its integrity and its ability to support the structure. The structure is at risk for failure and will fail as more erosion occurs. The height and slope of the bank currently creates a significant hazard to the safety of pedestrians and automobile drivers and passengers using the structure or the parking area, and this hazard will increase to the extent that as more time passes without action to stabilize the bank. Sullivan Tire building will be at risk at some point if nothing else is done to stabilize that bank. Absent any action to stabilize the bank, the 30-inch drain pipe will fail, and we can't really guess at this point how long that would take. Like I mentioned, that's about a 15-foot drop right now. It's eroding all the time. It could go at almost any time. I have some recommendations for stabilizing the structure, and those would be to install any additional fencing or barriers as needed to keep the public away from the area. Add some material to reduce the slope of the bank. Install riprap stone between the structure and the bottom of the 30-inch drain pipe to armor the bank and prevent erosion. Fill the eroded hole, that hole that you see down below that 30-inch pipe there. Fill that up with large riprap to the bottom of the 30-inch pipe, and construct a large riprap plunge pool to reduce the energy of the flow coming out of that 30-inch drain pipe. From there, we would have to also riprap level spreaders to step the water down from that surface of the plunge pool to the ultimate stream elevation at the bottom of the hill. And we would also recommend installing vegetation or surface treatment on the bank as appropriate to reduce the likelihood of erosion. That's my presentation that I've had at this point. We have to answer any questions or council may have.
Mr. Mayor? Thanks, Dave. With regards to the concrete pipe, the 30-inch pipe, has there been any inspection in the pipe to see if it has failed in the run?
Yes. Yes, we did have Ted Berry come in and TV inspect the pipe all the way from Lisbon Street, all the way out through. The integrity of the pipe looks to be pretty good until you get to the point where it's opened up and the erosions happen.
And is that, how far in, does that quality, the condition of the pipe, go back to?
That actually went back, let's see if I can get back to it. So, back in, someplace back in this area, there is some manholes that we actually went into and put a camera down through the pipe, and it went through the whole length of that 30-inch pipe all the way to where it daylights.
And as far as the earth below the outlet of the concrete pipe, is that undermining back up into the bank, and do you have any documentation showing that?
Right now, it's just cut vertically pretty much, right straight down from the end of the current, end of that concrete pipe.
Okay, so there's no evidence that the pipe has moved?
Not yet.
Okay. Thanks.
We're not really opposing, but could I just get a couple things clarified from the city employees? What's causing the erosion? Is it rainwater, or is it the flow from that 30-inch pipe and the six-inch pipe?
I guess we would have to say that both would be included as part of that.
But clearly, the erosion is coming from those pipes.
Objection, that's misstating what.
No, let me explain. We think the biggest problem is that someone extended the concrete pipe, hang on, about 100-some feet. They did it with corrugated pipe. That corrugated pipe deteriorated, rusted out at the bottom. The stormwater that was carried on that pipe started seeping through that pipe into the ground, washed out the ground around it. May have also been contributing from surface runoff from the area as well as the other drainage structures that go in there, but I think that's largely the reason why the problem has reached the extent that it is today.
And again, I'm just seeking clarification on certain facts. I represent Storage Realty. That pipe is not on our property. We're looking to make things safe as well. We don't want to exacerbate this problem or fight over who's responsible, but I do want to make sure that I understand what safety measures the city may take are appropriate. So I understand it's the two pipes, maybe some things have been extended and failed, but there is definitely that pipe and/or location is causing the problem. So the city, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city installed a drain pipe, a concrete drain pipe in the 70s? Is that what one of the gentlemen said?
The 30-inch pipe was installed in the 1970s. The 18-inch pipe had been installed before that. We don't know when the six-inch pipe from this parking lot was put in, but we know the building was constructed sometime in the mid-'50s.
Would there have been records maintained by the city as to what was on the site in the 70s when the pipe was installed? The city pipe?
Yeah, no, we've looked in our files in planning and code enforcement, and we don't have anything given the age of the structure out there.
So from the 70s, we don't have any specific things as to what was installed by the city?
Right, or on the Sullivan property.
Yep, okay.
Just one clarification. We do have records that when we installed the 30-inch pipe, including the riprap and armoring that was done to prevent erosion. We have no records, and we've looked as to when and who installed that corrugated pipe.
Right, and neither do we, but we don't need to find that out tonight. Right, and neither do we, but we don't need to find that out tonight. But I did hear, I think, that no riprap exists there now. You said armored riprap was installed in the 70s and no riprap exists now?
Correct.
Okay. We don't know what happened to that riprap?
That's correct.
And?
We don't, we don't know whether it was removed or whether the erosion that's actually carried it downstream.
Okay, again, I don't know how close the stream is, but I guess if it falls and over time and basically erodes itself because of some other things, okay. So, am I correct in assuming that stability would start where the city pipe exists? If, if we're looking at securing the site because we're concerned about erosion, how far back do I go before something is stable? I'm not an engineer, so I, I don't know. So, if you're saying something's starting to erode, where's it going to stop?
Well, I mean, the, the riprap we're proposing to include in there would actually go further down, back down into this, this area down in here. It's, it's going to have to be stepped down as you come through to try and, try and lose the elevation from where the 30-inch pipe is all the way down to where the stream is.
I'm, I'm sorry, I want to go the other way.
Oh, back up.
I want to go up the parking lot.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, I think we need to build up above that pipe. In fact, let's go back to this one. This area, this area up above here and stuff, I think we need to stabilize that area as well to try and protect it because quite frankly, the, the structure or the parking lot is sitting on soils that is supported from this bank, so.
Okay.
So, that, that needs to extend up to the top of the bank.
But we don't know what's behind that going up? Whether additional materials will come down because of erosion or is there any place going into the parking lot where we can say, okay, now we're stable again?
We weren't, we weren't looking at going into the parking lot itself. We were looking at trying to stabilize the bank through use of riprap going off the bank.
Oh, okay, so, but if the bank gets stabilized, the parking lot would not be in danger?
We're, we're hoping, we're hoping that's in fact the case, yes.
And one final question. You mentioned reducing the flow of the 30-inch pipe. Is that an option?
It's not, it's not reducing the flow, it's reducing the speed of the water coming out and it's actually taking the energy from that water flow coming out of the pipe and slowing it down such that it, it isn't eroding any more soil further down from there and stuff. So, what we're trying to do is get the energy out of, create a plunge pool to let the water come out of the pipe, sit and then flow slowly down, down the pipe or down the riprap area.
Is, is there any other modification we could make to slow that flow down? I mean, could that pipe be rerouted in the street? Could it be blocked off? Could it be, you know, different things so we could stop the erosion?
That, that would be difficult to try and reroute that, that storm drainage at this point.
Okay, great. No further questions, thank you.
Your honor, if I could have just one, one follow-up question. The, there was some confusion about exactly what may be causing the erosion of the, of the bank. Could you state what, what factors may be causing the erosion of the bank?
It, it includes the, the flow from the pipes, from both, both the city, the two city pipes and the pipe coming out of the park, catch basin in the parking lot and any surface drainage that comes, that flows down through there as well. Just rain falling on the, on the slope itself will actually cause some erosion as well and stuff. So, what we're trying to do by that curb that we put in at the top is trying to redirect that away from the slope to try and minimize that as much as possible, but you can't eliminate it completely.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? A follow-up question on that with regards to the parking lot. Do we have any record of if and when that parking lot has been extended back away from the building towards the pipe outlet? Has it always terminated where it terminates or was it extended back at some point closer to the outlet?
I don't have any records on that, Dave.
I mean, there's no permits. I suppose we could look at aerial photos to see if there's been expansions over time, but there's no permits for expansion.
Because I, I see a potential, if the parking lot was originally not as deep, extending it back might increase the slope and cause, and exacerbate problems. Also, the drainage of the parking lot itself, has that been looked at to see where it drains? Does it drain to that 6-inch?
Yeah, yeah.
So, all, all the water that falls on the parking lot?
Most of it goes to that catch basin.
Will move to that catch basin and not just sheet off the back of the bank?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, first I just want to say Sullivan Tire is here to cooperate with the city and the landowners. We certainly don't feel we're involved in this. This is something that's impacting our property. It's why when we became aware of it, we did have an engineer come up and, and, and look in, at the erosion and to see if there was any safety issues for our employees, our customers or our site. Someone had mentioned, one of the gentlemen's up there had mentioned that the history is, is not important going way back and I disagree. As my colleague mentioned, what you're looking at is, and you're, you're drawing conclusions that since 2013 to now, a certain amount has eroded and thereby concluding, well, in another six years, the same amount's going to erode back and I think that's false. And the reason I, I think it's false is because as they had indicated, there was something done on that site. There was a, a pipe put in at some point in time. It's our belief, it's the city's belief that an unknown party connected a non-permitted pipe to that system which created some of this and then perhaps had fill put in. What we're seeing, if you go back historically, is where, where was that 40 years ago? We might be back to where we began. What might be eroded is simply all the fill material that was put in there. So, as my colleague mentioned, just because it, it has eroded, well, what's eroded? And that is important to look at. If, if the fill material is what's been eroded, certainly there's a bank, there's a steep bank there and, and there's an issue there, but what's to say it's going to continue to erode into the parking lot because now we're back to the city permitted system, the cement pipe? We're back to where we began, I guess, because that's, that's where it existed in the 70s. That pipe was the end, I believe, that the pipe was the end. So, we're back to the early 70s now. Where's the evidence that it's going to continue to erode into the parking lot? I haven't heard that really. I understand there's a, there's an issue now with that pipe and the riprap possibly being gone and creating that steep bank, but as far as further erosion, I really haven't heard evidence as to this is going to continue to erode, to where? Out to the street or whatnot and, and why would it? So, that's, that's my only question for, for the city engineer.
Is that a question?
Yes.
So, the, the fact that we have a 15-foot vertical drop from this 30-inch concrete pipe that has a flow and, and the flow that you see coming out there, there is probably pretty light compared to when it, when we have a big storm. When we have a big storm, you'll see quite a flow coming out of there and actually dropping down into this pool down here and stuff, which by in, in and of itself, will create some erosion along with the surface drainage and the, and the drainage that's coming off of that 6-inch pipe that's coming out of, out of the parking lot and stuff. To not think that that's not going to continue to erode this bank that's supporting that 30-inch pipe doesn't seem like a reasonable assumption to me. At some point, this bank, this vertical bank here and stuff is going to have, end up being eroded away, which is going to undermine where that 30-inch pipe comes out of and those, that 30-inch pipe, I believe, is in six to eight-foot sections and stuff and eventually that section is going to fall off and fall into the, into the hole as well. So, I don't think it's reasonable to assume that it's not going to continue to erode and I, I think it very reasonable to assume that it is going to continue to erode and get worse as, as time goes on.
My point wasn't to say that erosion is going to completely end. My point was that you drew a picture of, I believe it was 25 feet or something like that over a period of four years. My only point is, is that I don't believe, and I'm not an engineer, however, I don't think it's going to continue at that rate now that we are back to where we began with the city pipe. I believe it's going to slow, but?
I believe that the city engineer also said that he could not predict the timing of that. So, I don't think there was any projection that it would fall back another 25 feet in the next three, four years.
I'm just pointing out that the presentation seemed to imply certain things and, and made it seem that, okay, this is the erosion that took place in a certain period of time, hence, will it continue at that rate? So, that's my only point.
Counsel Bushad?
Just to follow up on that, I think what you're trying to drill down to might be in 1970 that had riprap on it. So, it was not going to erode further and now without the riprap, that is now in danger of actually eroding further. So, I think that's what I pulled out of it. But I also owned a landscaping company 15 years, I might be a little ahead of the curve there. But once that is secured with riprap, we should be in the clear for erosion as long as that riprap's actually maintained and nobody dumps a few more truckloads of fill down there?
Right, right. What, what we're most concerned about is if you start at the bottom of this area and go to the top, there's about a 50-foot drop there. What we're concerned about is with the steepness of that hill and the nearness of that parking area that's right behind there, if you don't have something up there to prevent some civilians from walking back through there or to protect some of the vehicles and, and customers of Sullivan Tire, you know, from getting too close to the area and stuff or the erosion actually does eat back into that, into that parking area, well, we're concerned about the public's safety, as I'm sure Sullivan Tire is as well.
The corrugated pipe there?
Yes.
How, how big is, how long is that pipe?
There's, there's about 120 linear feet of pipe laying down in the bottom of that area, so it was a?
The city did not put that in?
That's, we have no records indicating that the city did that.
Do you have a guess as to how long it's been there?
Well, I mean, the concrete pipe was installed in the early 1970s, 1971, '72 timeframe.
So, after that?
So, sometime after that.
And that's 120 feet of pipe?
Right.
In one piece?
No, it's, it's actually six or eight pieces going down through there, so.
Okay, I was just curious as to how it would get in there and, and, and nobody would, would know it. Nobody would observe. I'm not saying the city did it, I'm just saying that's, that's an awful lot of work to be done by someone and nobody seems to know how it got there.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, just, just a follow-up. So, that went in, I'm trying to gather, this corrugated pipe went in, you're, you're thinking probably not legally and then covered with fill?
We, we weren't aware that it had been extended. We didn't issue any permits to extend it, so.
Okay, so nobody got permission to do it?
Correct.
And covered it with fill, probably to hide the work maybe? That possibly could have compromised what was there before?
That's good.
Okay, thanks.
Could I just ask one clarification? Why would somebody extend the pipe? What, what purpose does it serve? You've got a 30-inch drain pipe that's draining into a ravine and I assume that there's no other entry in the corrugated pipe, so it didn't create its own additional water. Why would somebody extend the pipe?
I want you to answer that. I had the question myself.
The, the only reason I could think of would be that they were trying to develop more property to be able to develop further back there and stuff. I don't know.
That's conjecture at this point, though.
We just don't know.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, a couple of questions with regards to the corrugated pipe. Would you agree or disagree that the likelihood of that corrugated pipe being attached somehow to the concrete pipe, that attachment point failing would exacerbate the erosion problem coming out of that interface between the concrete pipe and the corrugated pipe?
Yeah.
With the amount of water flowing coming out with what we see has been filled at some point, probably around the corrugated pipe? It's my guess that when that corrugated pipe, pipe came off the concrete pipe, that water had to go somewhere and it eroded around causing the failure of that pipe to drop. Also, there are materials below this pipe that are from a tire facility. Could those have been up higher and fallen down with the failure of the, of the ledge?
What we suspect, and, and we don't have any real proof of this, but what we suspect happened was if, if you go down and you look at these, this corrugated pipe, the metal bottoms of the corrugated pipe, and this is typical of what happens, is the metal bottoms of a corrugated pipe will actually rust out and that's where it fails. And what we think may have happened, and again, this is a little bit of a conjecture here, but what we think may have happened is the metal bottom of the, of the furthest section of pipe out corrodes, it goes away, it eats away underneath there and stuff and the erosion starts from the end where that 120 feet of pipe is sticking out there and it works its way back. One section of pipe falls off, it starts eating back even further. So, rather than have a catastrophic failure at the connection point, we think it actually probably over the years failed section by section as it was coming.
And I've seen freshwater corrugated pipes fail at a 50 to 60-year timeframe, but would road salts, chemicals accelerate the erosion of steel?
It could, it could.
Thanks.
So, since it was brought up, I'll, I'll address the tire issue. As soon as we heard that there were tires, that's being Sullivan Tire, as soon as we heard that there were tires down there, we investigated immediately. We obviously take those things very seriously. Tires have a date stamp on them, DOT numbers, they're very easy to track. So, so two things. The tires are, at least from what we can tell, most of them are commercial tires, meaning truck tires, very large tires. Sullivan Tire doesn't deal in truck tires or sell truck tires from this location. That's the first thing. The other thing is these tires are from the 60s and 70s. Sullivan Tire came onto the site in 2000 certainly, not that anyone has mentioned Sullivan Tire in this, but Sullivan Tire certainly has nothing to do with the, the tires that are down there and certainly defends that position. I don't think the tires had anything, from our investigation, we don't believe the tires had anything to do with the erosion or anything that has taken place, but, but we have also looked at the tires down there and investigated that fully and this is a historic thing. You know, I've been told that, you know, back in those days, sometimes they used tires in fill, sometimes they used them for erosion control even. So, it's hard to tell back in the 60s and 70s what happened on that site, but we weren't on the site until the 2000s, so.
Do you have an environmental person who has to speak?
I, I- I, I, I had an environmental person also review this, but I did not bring him here with me tonight.
All right, because we, we thought there was somebody here that-
Oh, Jack O'Leary from SciTech Environmental, but he's a civil engineer, not an environmental scientist.
Does he want to testify?
Sure, sure.
Yes, regarding the tires, I was, I was one of the people that, that clambered down into that ravine and looked at the tires, and I saw many dates on tires from the nineteen seventies, none more recent than that. I also observed that at least some of the tires were apparently buried close to the bottom of that fill, they were popping out of the fill as the erosion was ongoing, so it appeared that they were there before the fill episode that has created that, the issue. Thank you.
Last question that we're gonna-
David, what, my question is related to, is the top of the pipe up to the, the parking area of the fences or whatever. For a corrective action that you're recommending, what action needs to happen in that area that's right above the pipe, going back toward the structured parking?
Yeah, we, we believe some riprap going back up that, that slope, maybe filling back in a little bit and putting some riprap in, and then also potentially getting some, some sort of plant life growing to try and stabilize the soil and stuff, vegetation and stuff, so...
Thank you. You wanna wrap it up?
Yeah.
You're first, then?
Correct. Yeah, I guess I would, I would say first, just as a, as a preliminary matter, the evidence before the council is in the, in what you've seen in the, in the exhibits, in the presentation, and what came out of Director Jones's mouth, Deputy Director Hediger, and the last gentleman that spoke, the engineer. I'm making argument, the two attorneys that, that spoke are making argument. The evidence that you saw, that you heard tonight, is that the, the bank is eroding and it's unstable, and specifically that there's a fifteen-foot vertical drop underneath the, underneath the pipe, and it's very steep above that. You, you heard evidence that there was no riprap on the bank remaining from the seventies, you heard evidence that there's no vegetation, so there's nothing to stop further erosion or, from, either from the pipes or the surface runoff. Director Jones also testified that the erosion has compromised the integrity of the bank, the ability to support the structure, it's unstable, and that additional storm water that flows through either the thirty-inch pipe or the six-inch pipe and surface runoff will continue to erode the bank. He testified that the structure is at risk for failure, and that the height and slope of the bank creates significant hazard to people using the bank. That's the, those are the facts that you heard. He concluded that, excuse me, that, those are the facts you heard and the conclusions that he made. Sullivan Tire started, I'm, I'm sorry, Storage Realty, one of the owners, started by saying that they don't oppose the action today. There were two questions before the council. Is there a significant risk to, to people's health and safety posed by the structure? And if so, what to do about it? The deputy director has, has testified that the, the, the facts pose a significant risk to health or safety, and we would ask you to find that tonight by, by adopting the proposed order that is there. He's outlined the recommendations of what to do about it, moving on to the second question. The, one, the order would order the city, I wanna, I wanna bring you to the order portion tonight, paragraph, starting with paragraph thirty-nine. You would be ordering the city administrators taking the actions that the deputy, that, that Director Jones has outlined to secure the structure, unless either one of the owners comes forward with plans that, in the city administrator's judgment, are sufficient to secure the structure, and there's a date certain to do that. This, the second piece is, the next paragraph is important. After that work has been done, and the cost to secure the structure has been determined, you, you would be authorizing the city to thirty days after to ma, demand to order the owners to reimburse the city in the amount that the city administrator determined. Now, this is really important at the end. There's a lot of question here as to exactly what happened, and that's not clear. If the, if either of the owners, and I'm gonna read now, the owner of seven ninety-five Lisbon Street or the owner of eight oh five Lisbon Street establishes to the satisfaction of the city administrator that the city was responsible for causing the metal corrugated pipe to be inserted into the concrete pipe, causing the erosion, the owners would not pay. So, they, they have the opportunity, they have to, to present evidence to show that in fact, if it was the city, it's the city's responsibility to pay for the remedy to fix it. And with that, thank you for your time, and we ask that you adopt the proposed order of staff. Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have to wish to respond to that?
I ju, I just wanna reiterate that Storage Realty, the owner of eight oh five Lisbon Street, is very concerned about public safety and certainly would support any actions that enhance the public safety. I would like to mention that, that pipe, I think, is confirmed that it is not on eight oh five Lisbon Street, it's on seven ninety-five Lisbon Street. So, obviously, my client is as much impacted in a negative way as the city is, but not apparently through its own fault, because the pipe's not on its property. And short of that, I would just caution the city before taking extreme actions with respect to the, solutions with respect to the property, that we actually have engineering studies that determine what the appropriate remedy is. And again, I just wanna reiterate, I think if we reduce the thirty-inch flow, you're gonna reduce the erosion, and, and it's gonna cause everyone to, or this slope to be stabilized as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight oh five?
Sullivan Tire reiterates what my colleague stated. I mean, we certainly wanna cooperate, make sure that, you know, the, the public is safe, certainly our customers, our employees, anyone that visits our location. It is in the rare of our location, we are just tenants there, but we certainly care about those things. It does seem reasonable to shore up, you know, in some manner, that slope. I mean, I think that's, that's fairly clear. How and who pays for it is, is, is another issue altogether, but certainly, we support, we support the city's action and, and certainly remedying this, and we'll cooperate in any way we can.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
Mr. Mayor? With regards to the riprap that was apparently placed when the thirty-inch concrete pipe was placed, do we have any engineering drawings or records of, of that project when that pipe was placed with riprap showing exactly how it was laid out?
There, there are some records showing what the, the installation of that pipe, and that there had been a plinth pool and some riprap armoring done.
So, the city does possess documents that show how that was engineered and, and protected in that regard?
Yes.
Okay. With regards to the easement on that pipe, how far beyond the outlet of the concrete pipe does the city's easement go?
Let's see, let's go back here for a second. Okay, so the thirty, the thirty-inch pipe, let's see if I can, there we go. The thirty-inch pipe actually stops right about this area where that, where that black ax is, is, that's the end of the thirty-inch pipe and stuff. The easement actually goes back, and from that point to this back point here, I would guess, I'd have to do some measurements, Mike, I, off the top of my head, I'd say that's roughly about a hundred feet or so.
So, it's quite a ways down the hill. Is that a maintenance easement?
Yeah, it's, it's also, it's also the cover, that eighteen-inch pipe actually extends down to about this point and stuff, that's where that-
And with a maintenance easement, who is responsible for maintaining the utilities in that easement?
The city is.
Okay, so ultimately, it could be argued that the city is responsible for maintaining the outlet conditions of that pipe?
It could.
Okay, and that's one of the questions I have, and this may not be the time to propose this, but I would propose that any agreement that we have would be split in cost between the property owner and the city, so that's something to consider in discussion. Thank you.
So, we've already incurred the cost for the, for the fencing, right? What, what other costs have we incurred already?
The installation of the concrete, or the asphalt berm that we put in there and stuff, I mean, basically, it's about a thousand bucks.
And the fencing?
Fencing is included as part of that, so... Somewhere between a thousand and fifty-five dollars.
Because I, I mean, to me, you know, I think everybody agrees that, you know, public safety's the primary thing, and when you have a situation like this, you gotta take some action or, you know, with the weather comes up, you have snow, people could, you know, then, and then, I, you know, looking at it, obviously, in my opinion, the, the structure parking lot is certainly, certainly at risk, and that's where the public goes when they're feeling unsafe, so I, I, I do think the city needs to step forward and do things. Obviously, who pays for that, that's a, you know, part of the equation as well.
Okay, what, what kind of a consensus we come to? What are we gonna do? Are we just gonna table it?
Well, I mean, my, my, I mean, I have thought it's, it, it needs to be done, the safety issue is, is there. I, I don't think it's, I don't think we need to point fingers, I don't think anybody really knows who's responsible, so it's one of these things, Council of Chance pointed out, it's like, all right, it needs to be done, there's some sort of agreement, the city and the business owners can, it's like, okay, this is something we do as a community, we don't know how it got like this, it got like this, it isn't safe, we need to fix it, without saying it's your fault, you need to pay for it, no, it's your fault, you need to pay for it. I would rather see a resolution like that than sit here and try to assign blame as to who's really responsible, I don't think that really matters.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, might suggest, there is an order in front of you.
Right.
So, if you would move and, and, and second the order and then debate it, a couple of issues that come, I think, need to be addressed clearly, but I think they can be addressed later. One is how the cost would be borne, and the second is tire issue, which is really a separate issue that's not directly related to this, in that we've taken other action against the property owner in which most of those tires are. So, that would be my recommendation on how to proceed. Our concern is that the situation be addressed before it gets much worse. Other issues will have to be dealt with as they come along.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that with regard to the property at seven ninety-five and eight oh five Lisbon Street, to adopt the finding of, findings of fact, conclusion of law and order, the corrective action proposed by the Public Works Department, which order establishes the corrective action to be taken by the property owners and the timeframe for taking such action, and which authorizes the city administrator to take such corrective action if the property owner fails to do so, and to recoup the city's costs through a special tax or collections action.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Council Cluteus, I'm gonna buy Council of Chance.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to propose an amendment, and this would be on, under the order, section forty, and I'm just reading through this, actually, we'll go to section forty-one, and obviously, this can be discussed by this body and others, that the cost, basically, forty-one would be rewarded to, to convey that the cost of reparations on this site would be split between the city and one or more parties involved. And that would be a fifty-fifty split.
The, the difficulty with that is, is that I don't believe that's gonna work very well if we get into a negotiation, because I think there are going to be positions that people will be taking. There are three property owners, so you can't split it fifty-fifty. I'm not sure that, that Sullivan Tire would agree to paying a third, and I don't know what the, what the third property owner would say. I think these are things we're gonna have to work out, and I, my concern is, if you put it in the order, that may prevent us from doing anything until we get an agreement on how it will be paid for.
Council of Clifford advises that we cannot do that, that's not, we, we just propose.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, that was my question earlier before the motion was made, that we would do this and discuss this and have that possibly happen in the motion, which was seconded under that direction. So, I would ask staff or council, in regard to splitting the costs with, between the city and the parties, what can we do in this order? Because cost is definitely addressed in this, on forty-one.
My, my suggestion is, if you want to have that resolved before the order is adopted, that you table the order and we see how things go, which means that we would not do any work in advance.
More work.
You know, and again, I'll look at, at Council Carey, if he has any other views on that.
No, I, I agree with that. Mr. Administrator?
Council Cluteus?
So, the next item on our agenda is to transfer money from, let's see, from the Stormwater Utility Fund to stabilize the erosion problem at this location. So, there's no way to move ahead on that resolve without-
If we don't, if we don't have the order, we can't move forward with that either.
So, in the interest of public safety, I would, I would propose moving ahead on the order that we just passed, passing this resolve, and then figuring out how we're gonna recoup the costs if, and from whom.
Thank you. With regard to moving, I also believe it's important, I would also ask the property owners, if I may, if they're amicable to share the cost, however that works out, and if any of the property owners wish to, to address that, however that might work out, I think that'd be helpful for the council to know. So, that's a, a question to the property owners.
Sullivan Tire doesn't own any property to either of these sites, we're simply a tenant of Storage Realty, so I don't believe, just wanna be clear for the record, Sullivan Tire doesn't own any of these properties, we're a tenant in the location, we didn't purchase the business that was there, we just simply leased the building in two thousands.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, the other property owner is not present, I, I assume, in any way?
Franklin Property is, is not represented here tonight.
They are not represented here tonight.
Mayor, if I may?
Yep. Did you, I mean, on behalf of Storage Realty, I've not spoken with my client, again, I just reiterate, the pipe is not on our property, and I'm not authorized to spend any of my client's money in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to-
We have a motion, okay, by Council Cluteus, and it was seconded. So, we're gonna go through, forward that motion? Going forward that motion?
The, the motion is to do the work, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. The, the assignment of blame occurring of cost, it'll be resolved later, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. The, the order authorizes us to go ahead after certain conditions are met and, and make repairs. It also authorizes us at some point to put on a special tax. My view is that before that was done, there would certainly be some negotiations with the property owners involved to see if we can come up with a reasonable way to share the costs or to split the costs or to, you know. I will also tell you, as was said before, if we caused this, then we'll pay for a hundred percent of it. And I would urge anybody who knows anything about this and how that pipe got there to come forward and let us know, because I'd love to know who did it. This is kind of a great mystery story, the, the who-done-it of the pipes. So, yes, I think at some point, we would have to have negotiations. The reason this order is important for those negotiations is absent this order, we would in effect, you'd be authorizing us to do it, and we'd have no mechanism to even try to collect at some point if we negotiate an agreement.
Fair enough.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
It's been seconded?
Yes.
Guess we've discussed it towards, I don't know, what, what else we can discuss? Guess we've discussed it towards, I don't know, what, what else we can discuss. So why don't we call a roll?
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. I'm sorry, is it, that was a yes? Yes. Sorry, thank you. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. I guess five, we don't...
We will need number five, yes.
Technically, all right, okay. Agenda item number five.
Item number five, resolve authorizing the transfer up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the Stormwater Utility Fund to stabilize erosion problem at 795 and 805 Lisbon Street. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the transfer of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the Stormwater Utility Fund to stabilize erosion problem at 795 and 805 Lisbon Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Cludia. Discussion. Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number six.
Item number six, order authorizing the city administrator to execute an, an amendment to the agreement for the purchase and sale of real estate at 188 Lincoln Street with LWS Development LLC. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute an amendment to the agreement for the purchase and sale of real estate at 188 Lincoln Street with LWS Development LLC. So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Cludia, seconded by Counselor Bouchard. Discussion.
If we can get some information from staff on this, a brief summary.
Yep, I will take care of it. You folks, this past summer, had approved the sale or transfer of 188 Lynx, Lincoln Street, which is the former Lincoln Street Fire Station, to LWS Development, who has plans to put two apartments on the upper floor and to put a restaurant in at street level. They have been going forward with, going through their due diligence and getting this on the historic register, so they can use historic tax credits to help fund it. And with the changes that are going on in DC, they were concerned that if they did not get ownership of this property before the turn of the year, they may not be able to take advantage of the historic tax credits, which is a key component of their financing. Things have settled down a little bit in, in Washington, and it looks like the historic tax credits will be in the next round of budgets. So when I wrote this memo, they were saying we really need to close before the turn of the year. I do have a one-sheet agreement, which I left on your desk to review, but it was pretty straightforward, basically saying, we'll close before the end of the year, and if you don't have financing, a tenant, and plans to build this by June, you give the building back to us. That's effectively what the amended agreement says. Talking with the developer, they had asked that the council take action on this tonight. And seeing how things go with votes down in Washington DC, they will determine whether or not they actually do go ahead and close before the end of the year. They have made it clear they have no desire to own this. If they can't do the deal, they do not want the building after, after June. And if, if they ultimately can't pull it off, they wouldn't even close if they know they'll still be eligible for tax credits. So that's what's driving it.
So I'd just like to say to the, to the potential developers that I'm one of the biggest skeptics on this council, and I'm excited about this. So I really am supportive of, of their plan and hope, hope that goes through, because this will be great for the area.
It, it's good to hear, and these, these guys really have worked it hard. They've done the environmental, they've had the historic folks, they've had drawings done, they've got renderings, so they're getting there. They're lining the pieces up.
Any other? Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, authorizing a zero percent interest rate loan not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city's general fund to the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee to provide working capital until either federal reimbursements are received, or a hundred and twenty days has lapsed. Requested action to approve the authorizing a city, a zero percent interest rate loan not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city's general fund to the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee to provide working capital until either federal reimbursements are received, or a hundred and twenty days has lapsed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Counselor Bouchard, seconded by Counselor Cludia. Discussion. Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
No.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
No.
Word one.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of five to two.
Agenda item number eight.
Item number eight, order authorizing the city administrator to enter into a parking lease agreement with Sigma Six Properties LLC for a property located at 45 Maple Street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to enter into a parking lease agreement with Sigma Six Properties LLC for a property located at 45 Maple Street.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Bouchard, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, here it is. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'd just like to ask the property owner if there is a parking problem in this area with not having enough parking. Thank you.
You mean at my building there, specifically, or Lewiston in general?
Specifically, or, you know, in that, the area, the block, the immediate area.
Yes, yeah, there's a real parking problem there. That building's the first building I bought when I came to Lewiston. And there's a little strip behind the building. You can, you park cars there in the summer, but there's no way to plow it if there are people parked there. So in talking with Ed, I need like, less than a thousand square feet. I'd allow my tenants that are parked beside the building and will allow me to plow in there. My long-term interest would be to develop that whole parcel at some point. I just got to get to the project I'm on now, but...
So what might you do for parking if the, if that parcel was developed?
Well, the only other option I've got is up on Knox Street, right? Because my building actually sits on the corner of Knox and Maple. To the left of my building, I could build a retaining wall and bring in a bunch of fill, I guess, and make some parking there. But that's not going to work very good this year.
Thanks. And I support this, but I just want to note that there's a movement underway to relax our parking standards downtown for these multi-units, multi-family apartments and buildings. This is an example that I think is more common than people would like to admit, that we do have a parking problem in certain parts of downtown with multi-unit buildings. It's exacerbated in the wintertime when there's even less parking. In this case, we have a property owner who has a parking problem. It seems to be fairly adequate in the summertime, but in the wintertime, it just doesn't work. At the same time, we're trying to relax our parking standards to, to reduce the amount of available parking downtown in these areas. I think that's poor planning, and there's certainly debate on that subject. I would definitely support this, this motion to give some relief to the tenant and to the property owner.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, order authorizing the city administrator to execute a new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lewiston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1458 on behalf of the Lewiston Public Works Unit.
So moved.
Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute a new collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lewiston and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1458 on behalf of the Lewiston Public Works Department.
So moved again.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilor Chans, seconded by Counselor Bouchard. Discussion. Hearing none to the public. Back to the council.
We amended it.
Call a roll.
Ten A and ten B. Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor, Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Ten A.
Ten A, thank you. And I'll just point out, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of all the counselors, that we did have to amend your agenda tonight, so you have a ten A and a ten B. Uh, ten A is the appointment to the planning board. Ten B is order approving an amendment to the home agreement for the Hartley Block. That paperwork was on your place tonight. So we have ten A and ten B. So, uh, ten A is appointment to the planning board. There are two items for requested action. The first item, to determine if the current city council would like to make this appointment or forward that action to the incoming city council.
So moved.
So, um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Christine Kittredge to fill the current vacancy for a full member of the planning board. Said term to expire January eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion that's been seconded. Any more discussion? Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And?
Item, uh, ten B would be to approve the order, approving an amendment to the home agreement for the Hartley Block and authorizing the city administrator to execute the same.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Counselor Cludia. Discussion. Oh, go ahead.
Just to give you a, a brief summary of this, I know the last time I was in front of you, I said it was the last action you would have to take on the Hartley Block. And there were some changes made at Main Housing that may meet those words. They changed the source of funding that they used. Uh, there's four hundred and nine thousand of dollars that used to be coming from the state's pot of home money that they're using a different funding source for. So that changed the number of home units that are going to be dedicated at the Hartley Block from seven home units to four home units. Two of those will be owned by the city. The other two will be owned by, by the state. Uh, and the state also asked that the home agreement that you folks approved, I sort of took a broad brush, saying, look, here's our money, here's what the state is putting in. And so I referenced all seven units. They asked that we remove the reference to their units. They'll have their own home agreement. So the agreement that was on your desk when you came in tonight effectively takes it from seven units down to four. We'll have a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom unit in the project. And those are really the nub of the changes.
Questions? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none to the public. Back to the council. Call a roll.
Counselor from word two.
Yes.
Word three. Yes. Word four.
Yes.
Word five. Yes. Word seven.
No.
Word one.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one. Thank you.
Okay. Although I'm going to miss this one. And, and you know what? If I'm home, I won't be watching it, because I'll be watching a movie or something.
Yeah, wow.
Which is more interesting, okay, to me. I know, not to you, but to me, okay. Agenda item number eleven, the update of the Lewiston School Committee representative.
So our last meeting was on December eleventh, and we recognized the departing school committee members. Um, we also received and approved the nomination of Bobby Avery as the chief administrative officer, replacing Elaine Runyon. We had an audit presentation, and we received and approved the MSBA Delegate Assembly Resolution in Support for Public Education. And the next official meeting of the school committee will be at the inauguration on January second.
That's it?
That's it.
I know how I can take that too much.
I know, I'm sorry to disappoint you.
I know. Reports and updates?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just very briefly, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the council members, those of you who will not be returning, as well as those who will be returning for the last, hard work of the last two years. It's always, I think I always have a warm spot for this council, because in that first six months, we tried to kill you. We had so many big, major issues coming before the council, and, and you hung in there through that period of time, dealing with things like the comprehensive plan, the acquisition of the canal system, Mill Five, which we're still dealing with. And we'll be working with Counselor Bouchard when he becomes mayor, and a whole series of other issues. So it really has been a...
You forgot the most important one. Chickens.
Chickens.
Chickens. And dogs.
And dogs.
And dogs. So we had, so we had a whole series of interesting issues that we had to deal with.
We banned the hoverboards in city buildings.
That's right, we banned hoverboards.
And miniature horses, I think. Miniature horses, too.
So anyway, I just want to thank you for your, your service, especially those of you who won't be returning. I want to say especially that on behalf of all of the staff, we appreciate your hard work, especially to Mayor McDonald. He has been a true pleasure for staff to work with. He has been supportive. He's been there. He's worked with us. He's tried to keep the city moving forward in a positive direction. And I think all of us on staff, especially those of us in the city managers, city administrators' office, really appreciated having him, and we will miss him, although I know he's not missing leaving the job. So, but we're also looking forward to working with Shane, the returning counselor. So again, thank you very much for your service.
And I'll miss you and the staff there, because, especially you, because all those meetings, I was just in awe.
Well, thank you.
When you were in around circles and all these other, other city managers. You were like the, you were like the, the man to go to. I loved it.
Well, when you've been around as long as I have, I guess.
Okay, so we had that. Now, the last part of the business is, do we have any? Yes.
Any other business? I would like to make a quick, it's eight forty-five, so we'll be out of here by ten fifteen. Now, this is only going to be brief. I just want to go through the, through the row. Dennis, it's been a short time you've been on, but I think you're, you're right on track. You've done excellent in the short amount of time we've had to work with you. So thanks for, for your works, your work stepping into this spot and, and helping out. Heather, you are a human abacus. I think working through budgets with you has been...
There's a compliment. Wow.
On a grand scale. I mean, you've made the budgets a lot easier than they would have otherwise been. So I think your, your competence with numbers and budgeting is really appreciated. And Ed, although I haven't approved any of your raises, I think you are one of the best we have.
And, and I still like you anyway, Mike.
And you, you are really the best we could, we could get. And that's, there aren't, there aren't any better. So really, that's it. So I appreciate all, all your work, and you've been responsive to everything I've ever asked you to do. So I appreciate working with you for the last four years. And Kathy, you have so many awards, and they're all well-deserved for what you do. I think that's, that's something that we all recognize. So the city is lucky to have you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Jim, you're on the far left, I'm on the far right, but we get along great. This is...
Literally and figuratively.
I would have never imagined that it would be possible. I would have never thought this would be possible, but it's been an amazing two years to work with the respect that you've shown, and I've tried to give that back.
Absolutely.
And that does not go unnoticed, and it, it's very appreciated.
Appreciate it. Likewise.
Jim, we're on the same side of the political spectrum, and that makes our jobs a little easier, I think, and I appreciate...
I'm the tempered one.
I appreciate, I appreciate having you there. Izzy, whatever you decide to do, I hope it works out great, and you're a success. You have a lot of different options, so the, the sky's the limit. So I wish you luck. Shane, good luck. You're going to need it. You'll have fun, or maybe not, but you'll know before I do. So it's been a pleasure working with you. Never a dull moment. So good luck. Kristen, we don't always agree, and we really didn't agree the first two years, but I think this last, these last two years have been great. And I really actually liked you as a person. And I think that's something that, regardless of politics, I think that's an important factor in, in what we do here. But at the end of the day, we're just Lewiston residents with families, and we're doing what we feel we need to do for the city. So I appreciate working with you for two full terms. And then there's the man. In two thousand, what is it, two thousand and eleven you ran the first time?
Yeah.
I was in McDonald's with my son, and Gene Tardif was there with a McDonald button, and I said, hey, nice button. on, everything happened. He put me in touch with you, we talked, I got a sign, I supported your campaign. And it all started because of Gene and McDonald's, so.
McDonald and McDonald's.
Gene and McDonald's, yeah, exactly. So, everything I've done in politics in Lewiston, I owe to you and Gene, because you had him wear that button, and it worked. So I want to thank you for-
He wanted me to wear the button, but I wouldn't, and you were my wife for it.
So I want to thank you for everything you've done for Lewiston, and you got me just a little foot in the door to get onto appeals, and then eventually run for council. So I want to thank you sincerely for what you've done, because that's affected a lot of people, and I think in a good way. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Okay, with that, we've gone down the sentimental lane, and-
Uncomfortable and moving on.
And that was five minutes. I did it in five minutes.
Do I have a motion?
To adjourn?
To adjourn, just yet. So you, a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that unanimous?
Indeed.
Okay. So as Bugs Bunny says, de-dee, de-dee, that's all, folks.